Good evening. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Today is Thursday, February 24th, 2022. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genetino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements.
Just a couple of announcements. This evening, Mayor, next week on Monday night, February 28th, zoning board of appeals will meet for its monthly meeting at 7:00 PM. A meeting will be held here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall. And then the very next night on Tuesday, March 1st, the planning board will hold its monthly meeting for the month of March. That'll begin at 6:30 PM and be held here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall. That's all for me.
Thank you. We have one proclamation this evening.
Just a second. Proclamation from the office of Mayor Michael D. Quill. Whereas parent partnership is a critical and effective way to help families identify and build upon their strengths for themselves and their families and prevent child abuse and neglect. And whereas authentic parent partnership occurs when parents have the opportunity to partner with others and present a parent perspective and lens to informed policies and programs that support the growth of protective factors, leading to strong families and communities. And whereas the Children's Trust Fund Alliance, a national prevention organization, supports, encourages, and acknowledges partnerships between parents and community stakeholders, leaders, and policymakers as critical to developing strong communities nationwide. And whereas parent partnership can help with building strengths-based communities, that thrive based on protective factors. And whereas parent partnership is successfully achieved when parents are partners in the planning, implementation, oversight, and evaluation of policies, practices, and programs that affect families and communities by receiving support and training and having multiple opportunities to share their expertise. Whereas parents each year are partnering with others so together they can build stronger, safer communities where all children can thrive. And whereas parents have a powerful impact by sharing their lived expertise and they will continue to have a positive impact on the lives of families across the nation and world. Whereas many organizations across the community and state provide such partnership opportunities for parents. And whereas National Parent Leadership Month is an opportunity to recognize, honor, and celebrate these parents that have a vital role in their local community, state, and nation across the world. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the members of council and citizens of Auburn, thus hereby declare February 2022 as National Parent Leadership Month in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. Was this this evening we have Carrie Georgi to receive this along with her family? So Kara?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor Quill and City Council, for recognizing the importance of National Parent Leadership Month. Parent leadership is truly vital to strong communities. Parent leadership is the ability to share with your community about your needs as a family and to really work in partnership to build strong programs and policies that support families being strong through all the crazy adventures of parenting. Parent leadership is something I learned early on. It's important not only for my family, but more importantly for our community. Being able to partner with different groups and organizations like ABC Kiuga and the PlaySpace and dream about what could be not only for the future families of this community, but for my family and for one day, my children's children. It truly is a reward bigger than any that I can express. You see, parents are given these opportunities and their children get to see these opportunities in action. Our children get to learn to dream bigger, realize and recognize that their voice truly does matter, recognize and understand the importance of belonging, and most importantly, that they are a vital part of the community in which we live. The Children's Trust Fund Alliance, a 31-year-old nonprofit membership organization, really believes in supporting strong families and communities. They have so many free resources that our community could be using today. There's so many resources available that could help us with our work, with our messaging, and how we really build our community to not just be a strong community, but a community that thrives on building protective actors. My ultimate dream for our city is that we can take those five protective factors, things that every family, regardless of race, class, location in the city, need in order to be strong and thrive. We could become a city that starts building on our strengths. We could become a city where we shift from looking at what's wrong in our city and how do we fix it to what's strong in our city and how do we start really building on it and leveraging it. You see, my first time learning about protective factors as a mom, I knew it was something really big and important, but I was scared about it. Now that I better understand what those five protective factors are and know what they actually mean in my everyday moments as a mom, I now have them on my hardest days. The days when I'm in tears because my child really needs support and that support isn't readily available in the community. And I have to dig down deep as a mom to find that strength. If our city could take these tools and we could guide our messaging for all our families who live here, that their voice is important and matters, we need them to not just come in and tell us how are things going, but to truly be sitting at the table with us as we're designing, as we're dreaming, as we're building, and most importantly, as we're evaluating and thinking what's next for the future of our city. You see, the PlaySpace does that. The PlaySpace has done that from the very beginning. Took a long time to get here, but what the rewards we're seeing for families is priceless. The PlaySpace gets that it's not just about play. It's about recognizing how families are strong and how we help our community to be strong. In closing, I encourage us to really look at our city and all the ways that the systems interact into the lives of families. Find opportunities for families to share how those services are going. Partner with leaders and talking about how to make them stronger and even better services. And in addition, I encourage us all to take time to recognize how resilient the families of Auburn have been. Take time to recognize them as the heroes that they all are, as the Children's Trust Fund Alliance has done for parents across this nation. I encourage us to really recognize the work that all of us are doing in raising tomorrow's future. Tonight's proclamation is hopefully the first of many years where Auburn takes time to pause and say thank you to all the parents in our community who step into leadership roles in the many different ways that they do. And also, the many ways that parents today help to make the small downtown family-friendly atmosphere that Auburn is known for come to life. Thank you again to our state's leadership for celebrating National Parent Leadership Month and most importantly, for recognizing the important role that parents have in building strong communities today, tomorrow, and then the years to come. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Kara, you were busy talking there, but all of us up here were able to watch your family, their pride and love they had for you, so it was worth it. Mr. Diger, new hires?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of new hires and retirement coming up. Hired Daniel Cooper on February 2nd as an EMT with the ambulance service. Riley Chisholm started on February 7th as a laborer at our landfill. And we had William Steves start on February 18th as our signal electrician, which is an expanded role. And we've got a retirement coming up on March 31st. Well-known city employee through the years, Jimmy Bushman, James Bushman, will be retiring on March 31st.
Thank you. Public to be heard. Mr. Clerk?
At this point, we'll open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? No one this evening? Very well. We'll have another public to be heard near the end of this evening's meeting. Approve the meeting minutes. Meeting of February 3rd of this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor LaCastro. Corrections, deletions, additions. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
I was absent, so I'll abstain.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. The other minutes will be available next week, counselors. Mr. Diger, City Manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. Wasn't necessarily anything new that popped up this week, but just a lot of work occurring on. We've informed council in the past that we have three collective bargaining agreements that we continue to work on. And I just wanted to update you all and let you know that those discussions are going well. We continue to work on budget development, so in the months of March and April, department heads will be before council to present their individual department budgets for your consideration. Next Monday, our staff will be having a riveting meeting related to trash. All things trash, trash pickup codes related to trash, the cost related to trash disposal, and all of those things so that we can prepare a presentation for your consideration in the near future. Yesterday, staff had a meeting related to summertime city-sponsored events and other events going on again. That's something that typically happens practically year-round. We take a little bit of a break in the fall and the winter, but really, planning for a lot of those events takes all year-round. This year, there's some partnerships being had for a significant amount of programming around the Juneteenth weekend. So that was a big thing that we worked on over the last couple of weeks in partnership with BID and the Chamber and a variety of other community organizations to get that up and going, and it sounds like that's going well. Planning Department continues to work with a number of developers interested in potential projects around the city. And that's pretty much where I was gonna leave off, but when Ms. Georgi was up speaking about things and talking about reinforcing or emphasizing the things that we already have or have done, made me think about a conversation that I walked into by mistake this week, but it was a great conversation.
Mistake on your part or mistake on?
Well, I'm sure they may or may not have been happy that I walked into it. I think they were happy that I walked into it because they were proud. It was our crew from down at Casey Park. And this council has approved a lot of funding for Casey Park and Felton Park over the last several years. Falcon Park, this past year, even with COVID, was extremely busy. It was a success, I think, by any measure. We expect it to be even more successful this year because as more people get a chance to experience Falcon Park, even more people want to be there. Whether it be the the baseball team trying to recruit players to play for the Auburn Double Days, or various teams and leagues wanting to have their tournaments there. It's become a destination. Casey Park is doing the same thing. What I was not aware about, aware of, until I walked into this conversation the other day, is that over the last couple of years, we've made a pretty significant investment in the ice and the locker rooms and the pool and the playground, and we're looking at the skate park and tennis courts and pickleball courts and all that stuff. Major investment over a period of time into Casey Park that hadn't happened really in almost 50 years that it's existed. But apparently, from what the staff is telling me, approximately five sheets of ice in the central New York area are not in service right now, and there are potentially not plans to put them back in service in the future. So there's been a lot of discussion of out-of-town teams wanting to utilize the ice and a lot of discussion about tournaments drawing in people from all over the Northeast. So it sounds as though visitors that come there are pleased with it. They're scheduling their next events and additional events for the future, so while we make those investments for our community use, it's also drawing in people from the outside that are staying at hotels likely eating at restaurants and doing other things. So it is actually becoming its own destination in sorts. Thought that was interesting. That's it, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Reports from members of council? Counselors? Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Last week, actually it was last Thursday, I, myself, and Mr. Talbot from the Director of Public Works did a Zoom call with members from the Eastern Region USTA to discuss tennis in Auburn this summer, some programming for tennis in Auburn this summer. And there were some local instructors and organizations involved with that with that discussion. Champions for Life, Jordan Sadowitz, and also Shelley Connor, who is involved with Auburn Community Tennis. And so we are solidifying a date. May 21st is a kickoff date for tennis in Auburn. That's gonna feature a programming that will utilize Casey Park. As Mr. Diger mentioned, the use of that increasing. And there'll be also some programming at the Y Field as well. So there'll be more information to follow, but there, May is Tennis Month, and I may be bringing forth a proclamation for Tennis Month. And seeing as we're having our kickoff in May, I think it'd be apropos. But anyway, I forgot to mention that last week, but it just goes in line with the programming that the Department of Public Works and our parks. You know, we are doing that. We're increasing that, and as Mr. Diger said, it's showing, you know, in more than one way, so. Just wanted to update everybody.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else at the council? Very well. Thank you. Moving along to our presentation, as council item 15A has been pulled this week because we've been pending weather down the state, so it will be postponed to a later date. Next, I'd like to introduce our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Jenny Haynes. Introduce our guest regarding Housing Visions. Jenny, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for having us here tonight. Wanted to introduce to you Chris Travassani, the Vice President of Business Development for Housing Visions. And before he comes to give an update on the Chapel House redevelopment, I just wanted to give a little background on the city's relationship with Housing Visions over many years. First time we worked with Housing Visions was in the late 1990s and early 2000s on the Westlake Ave revitalization project. Together, partners including HomeSite, Housing Visions, and the city put approximately $3 million into the neighborhood. Housing Visions rehabbed three large rental properties and manages those to this day. And that project really did turn that neighborhood around in its holding. Very proud of that partnership. In 2013 and 2014, we partnered again with Housing Visions and home headquarters and HomeSite on the Orchard Street revitalization project. That project brought more than $11 million to that neighborhood. Housing Visions demolished 11 buildings, did five substantial rehabs, constructed new buildings and houses, and created a new community space. So they've been a real amazing partner for us in doing housing projects, responding to needs in the community, listening to how we would like it done. So, and they are doing that again here with the Chapel House redevelopment project. Chris came in as a partner with really another focus housing project in mind. And I'll let him talk through that detail a little bit. But after some conversations with a working group that included some other local housing providers and DSS, completely changed the focus of his project. And he'll be presenting that to you tonight related to partnership with Chapel House to provide some needs in our community around emergency shelter and some permanent supportive housing. So definitely wanted to just make sure you knew who Housing Visions was to us, and we continue to appreciate their partnership. And I just wanted to share a couple of statistics related to emergency shelter needs. Was in a meeting earlier today with that working group. Today, there are 128 people housed in emergency-type situations. 33 in shelters and 95 in hotels. So the need for this project is definitely pretty obvious. And we'll continue to work with those partners and with Chris as he moves it forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Jenny. So first of all, thank you very much for having me tonight. My goal tonight was to more or less familiarize and introduce Housing Visions. Maybe we're new to some of you, even though we've been in your community for a while. Wanted to just explain kind of our company, but also kind of the funding sources that we utilize for our developments, kind of what our core mission is. And, you know, maybe elaborate a little bit more on, you know, what we've learned so far in interactions with Jenny and other folks in the community in terms of what your housing needs are. Because again, we don't have a pre-planned idea and try to place it somewhere in a community. We really want to understand what your needs are and do our best and utilize our skill sets and the funding sources that we know to accomplish your housing goals. So a little bit about Housing Visions. We started as a, more or less a focus group in the city of Syracuse. There was a group of parishioners at United Methodist Church, right on the shadows of Syracuse University, back in the late 80s, early 90s, just starting to see that immediate neighborhood deteriorate. Put a task group together and said, "How can we better this neighborhood?" Right on the outsides of the church. And that focus group kind of had a developer from Pyramid Companies, building malls around the country, tax accountant, a local attorney, and a more of a social worker. Put their heads together. The attorney and developer were kind of aware of this new program called the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit. Thought it'd be a new funding source to use to revitalize the neighborhood. So they acquired three properties, renovated them. Worked out great. The investors reinvested for a second project, and that group did a second project in Syracuse. And at that point, the one member of the group who was the developer from Pyramid quit his job, invested his life savings, and created Housing Visions. And Housing Visions, we're a non-for-profit. We're a 501(c)(3). We're also what's called a CHODO, which is a community housing development organization that enables to acquire and secure other funding sources that other, you know, kind of for-profit of the developers don't have access to. And really, we are mission-driven. As a non-profit, you know, our purpose is to really improve neighborhoods, and that's kind of our core mission. Improve the quality of housing through neighborhood revitalization and kind of create a model that's gonna be replicated, you know, what we did in Syracuse. Can we do that in other areas where there's, you know, more blighted neighborhoods? How can we turn those around, you know, starting with housing as a tool? So from that first project outside of United Methodist Church to today, we've now completed 46 projects now throughout New York State. Right now, our portfolio ranges from Albany, New York to Niagara Falls. We're as far south as Endicott-Binghamton now in New York. We actually have one development in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. And then we are finishing a development now up in Plattsburgh, New York. So kind of followed up 90, 81 corridors. In terms of dollars in investment, we now manage 1,700 housing units across New York State, and we've invested close to $500 million in housing improvements that we've done throughout the state. And our primary funding source doing these projects is the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. There's a lot of confusion what that program is. A lot of people confuse the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program to HUD Section 8. Those are two completely different things. I can't emphasize that enough because there's always confusion in regards to that. So basically, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, a developer earns these credits by building and offering housing to individuals and families who earn 60% of the area median income or below. So every county has their area median income. If you offer housing to folks who make a percentage of that and they qualify in terms of their occupancy, you earn an income tax credit. We're a non-profit. Those tax credits don't mean anything to us. So what we do is we package those credits on a development and we sell those credits to an investor. What we do with that money is that's how we fund the development. That's how we fund the construction. So then we're able to build these at very little debt or no debt. And that allows us to build these and offer them at rents that are affordable to these populations. Does an initial 15-year compliance period, that's when the investor is the majority owner of the development. At that point, they exit out, but we usually sign a 40- to 50-year regulatory agreement with the state to keep them affordable for that time. Along with the tax credit program, there are other New York State subsidies that are, sometimes can be combined. If there's a supportive housing element, like we're gonna talk about, with case management services for some vulnerable populations, there's a supportive housing opportunities program. It's called SHOP. And there's other state programs as well, the Homeless Housing Assistance Program, more to combat homelessness. There's some funding sources that are there. Also to build kind of emergency shelters that aren't eligible in the tax credit program because it's not eligible under the program based on the tax credit guidelines. And so what we do is we tend to develop everything that we do. We tend to construct everything we do because we are our own general contractor now. We've learned eight, nine years ago, better way to control cost and schedule and quality is to do the work yourself. So we are our own general contractor. We hold ourselves to a very high standard. And then we own and manage everything that we build. So those 1,700 that we do, we own those and we manage those. Part of our management services, we do annual income and asset certifications. We do one-year leases. Every year, they get renewed to make sure our tenants still qualify for the program. Do unit inspections, orientations. We offer services to our tenants. And we always hire local property management and property maintenance folks. So across the state, our best thing to do is we hire locally qualified staff to manage our properties and then have the support and training of our corporate office in Syracuse. So to highlight a couple of developments, Jen mentioned our SE Payne Cornerstone project. For those that aren't aware, you know, that was about a $10, $11 million development that we did on Orchard Street. Another development that's similar to what we're gonna talk about tonight, we completed back in March of 2019. Back in, I want to say it was about 2016, 2017, the Salvation Army of Syracuse came to us and said that their existing women's shelter on South Salina Street in Syracuse was on the verge of being condemned. It was just on the verge of disrepair. There were a lot of code violations. They had very little reserves to rehab that building, and they were on the verge of losing a women's shelter in Syracuse, which was much needed on the South Side. So we partnered with them. We found an old historic building on the west side of Syracuse that was owned by the land bank. Acquired that from the city. Were able to secure historic tax credits. Worked with the Salvation Army, redeveloped that into a combined housing development. So what we did is we have 15 shelter beds on the first floor of that building, emergency shelters for women to come in. And then we also did is we put case management services for the Salvation Army, and we have 16 permanent supportive housing units on the upper levels. So as they get in the shelter, we get them on their feet, get them case management, get them life skills that they need, and then they're able to live on their own upstairs with support services on the first floor of that building. That's been occupied since 2019, and it's been a great success story for us in the city. the Salvation Army. So based on that experience, and then again, we were approached by some, some local involved individuals in the Auburn community on doing a development for veterans and some folks with development disabilities. We thought that was interesting and we could do something. So we started some initial meetings with the task force, you know, more community stakeholders in housing, Councilor Jean Cuddy was involved in that as well. But as we started presenting the project, a lot of people were like, well, that's interesting, but we have much bigger needs. Probably the most vocal was, was County DSS in terms of the amount of money that gets spent every week, every month on housing the homeless population. We didn't want to limit it to just veterans, so we pivoted and said, okay, well, let's have a next meeting and we'll learn more about the homelessness issue. So next meeting came up and then the Chapel House site was identified as a potential redevelopment site that just currently doesn't satisfy its needs, it's under capacity. It serves a purpose for what it does, but it certainly can be improved and expanded. So we are in the process of negotiating a purchase contract with the Chapel House. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to demolish the two structures that are on there. So it's, you're all familiar with where Chapel House is, correct? So what we've done is we've done some preliminary studies. We think we can accommodate increasing the capacity of the existing Chapel House structure to 56 shelter beds. So we think we can build one structure that can satisfy more case management services, some individual treatment rooms, using some of the programming spaces with the Salvation Army that we did in Syracuse. We actually took Chapel House staff, met with the Salvation Army in Syracuse toward that building. What did we do right? What did we do wrong? How can we improve the first floor from an emergency shelter standpoint? We took those lessons, brought the architect in, laid out the first floor, and then we kind of designed something from there. So we have a concept that we think works from a capacity standpoint at the current Chapel House site. What we also heard is there's not only a need for emergency housing for some of the vulnerable homeless population, we need more supportive housing, we need more affordable housing. That current site is just too small to do everything that's needed. And really, we want to take full advantage of the resources that are available and do one large application that can accommodate as many goals as can. So we think we can fit an extra six, maybe eight permanent supportive housing units on the Chapel House site, but we think there's additional properties that we're going to look to try to add to this development to increase either more permanent supportive housing or more affordable housing as well. So what we're, what we're looking to do is kind of have more meetings, look at more potential areas of the city that make sense. Really want to look at maybe trying to accomplish some neighborhood revitalizations like we did on Orchard Street, if there's a way we can acquire three, four, or five other properties that are, you know, very strategic from a neighborhood standpoint, stabilize them and then maybe others around them can help bring that neighborhood up is kind of where we're, we're at right now. So we're looking to, to add some more properties to this development to make it work. So in terms of timing, this is kind of our current timeline that we're working off of right now, based on the types of housing that we're looking to do, the populations that we're looking to serve, our partners in this from an operating side, there's actually three different funding sources that we're looking to apply for to make this work. So I can go through this complete, this timeline, but the, kind of highlight some of the funding sources that we're looking at. So the first one is we're looking at the Homeless Housing Assistance Program funding application. I think that comes out more in the kind of late summer, early fall. What the HHAP program does is that will fund the entire Chapel House emergency shelter renovation. So we will go ahead and apply for that. That will not only fund the construction of the buildings, it will fund the beds, all the furniture, all the other appliances that are required to make that a fully functioning shelter. Coupled with that is New York State also has what's called the Empire State Supportive Housing Initiative. What that is, is that's a program for supportive housing operators to apply for an operating subsidy. What that is, it's a 15-year commitment to assist in the operating of the shelter or any other supportive housing component. So what we're asking is that the Chapel House apply for ESHI to cover their costs for 15 years for their staff, for case management, and for rent subsidies for the 56 shelter beds, as well as some of the permanent supportive housing that we can fit on that property. Once those two funding applications are in, there's a third one. And that's kind of the biggest one, that's the one where, we're going to be applying for the, the tax credits and then other state subsidies that we need to satisfy the budget. We think that one is probably going to come out sometime in, in the fall, early winter of this year. So once all of those come in, we think the awards will probably be announced by probably spring of 2023. And then at that point, we finalize our design, work with the attorneys to close, probably in summer or fall of 2023 and start construction at that point. It's kind of a very broad timeline, but just wanted to share with you kind of the major milestones, the major funding sources that we're going for. We do have a commitment from Kewa County for $250,000 to help fund some of the initial due diligence, fund the architecture, fund appraisal, market studies, any other environmental reports, geotechnical services. So we are in the process of, of starting the due diligence on that as well. So we have a really competitive complete application starting in August through the end of this year. So I guess based on that, are there any questions or comments for me at this point?
Counselor Castro.
Are we talking apples and oranges when we talk of revamping Orchard Street compared to revamping a shelter?
What we're looking to do is both. So it's a scattered site project. So one site will be the Chapel House site. That existing building will get demolished and converted into 56 shelter beds and six units. We're looking at one potential building on State Street, 197 Stray Street, we're looking at acquiring that, rehabbing that into potentially 15 to 16 one-bedroom units, whether they're supportive or affordable. You know, we haven't determined that yet. And then there might be some other neighborhoods in the city where we could do something like Orchard Street, acquire multiple properties, either demolish them if they're in very poor condition, or renovate them if, if that makes the most sense.
Right. Where I'm going with this is, how many do we house now at the shelter on Grand Ave?
I believe their capacity is 16.
So we're going to go from 16 to approximately 50?
Correct. Based on the current need of 128, right? Is that what you said?
Chief, do we have many issues at that location with 16?
Counselor, I don't have the exact numbers right now. We do respond there with the 16 people that they have housed there now.
So we're going to take a shelter with 16 with some issues and try to put 50 there?
Right. But we're also looking to apply for ESHI to cover more operating dollars for more staff, higher security, and a better building.
Right. So back to when you said, and I'm not being critical, back to when you said...
Counselor, can I ask you, can I ask you to talk in the...
Yeah, back to when you said we went from Orchard Street, which you did a great job down there, but it seems like the clientele on Orchard Street is going to be a little bit different than the clientele at the shelter because aren't the houses on Orchard Street owned and operator-owned?
We own the buildings on Orchard Street.
Right.
And then we would own the building on State Street, we would actually own the shelter building and we would own others. So Orchard, what we did on Orchard Street would be one component of what we're trying to do here.
Right.
I hope I'm answering your question.
You're talking a shelter compared to houses, correct?
Correct. So the two examples I showed you, the Ethel Chamberlain House and Orchard Street, we're looking to do both of those at the same time.
Right.
Think of it that way.
Like I said, I'm a little leery going from 16 to 50. And now you explained that you're going to have more client, more people working there.
There's a staff of two there, I think, for 16. We're hoping to ramp that up with much better services.
Still a little leery on that, so we'll leave it at that.
On, on that note, the ESSHI application, that's going to increase the staff for, for oversight, if you will.
Correct.
And what, how is that going to interface with some of the organizations that currently are here in Auburn, such as Kewa County Social Services and other organizations? Have you, what other 501(c)(3)'s or organizations that, that are involved in this, developing of this idea? Because obviously, there's a need. Who else besides DSS is involved in, in, in this?
I mean, we've consulted and heard what the housing needs are from other agencies. The Housing Authority's been part of those meetings as well. Homesite is part of that as well. We're hoping we can work side-by-side with Homesite on the neighborhood revitalization component of this development, similar to what we did on Orchard Street and what we did in Albany, New York and some other parts of the state, where we would look to acquire maybe three or four different buildings, have them be affordable rentals. Homesite or Home Headquarters or Habitat for Humanity can acquire some other strategic buildings on that same block and renovate those into a homeownership type of situation. So we think having a mix of affordable rental housing and homeownership, all-new construction, either rehabbed or brand-new, would really help the streetscape of the neighborhood immensely.
And is this something that you've done in other cities with this kind of homeless shelter? Or is this a new...
I just showed you the Ethel Chamberlain House.
Yes. For the, is, is there others, is there other examples or is that the only, the only?
That's the only shelter we've done. We've done a number of other supportive housing developments. So we've partnered with the YWCA in Lockport, Niagara Falls, Syracuse, and Binghamton. So we've done four supportive housing projects with them. What we do there is we'll acquire either one building or a number of buildings. So the one in Endicott, for example, we bought an old school, we renovated that into 43 units and we set aside 12 of them for homeless families with support services for the YWCA. So we're actually integrating some of the supportive housing units in with the rest of the population in there and it's working well.
And so Ms. Haynes, I mean, can, can, I just want to, because I think for this to be successful, you know, planning, identifying partners for this is going to be, is going to be important. So you had mentioned Homesite, you mentioned Habitat for Humanity, and I think that, you know, the more local support, the more overlap so that the needs are being met. You know, I could see the importance of this, I could see the need for, I see the need for this, but I think it's crucial that we are, you know, that, that, that the local human services industry is working hand-in-hand with Housing Visions.
That's, so that, that was the, the whole purpose of putting this sort of working group together. Counselor Genatino has been involved from the beginning as well, making sure that we have both service providers, DSS, and housing agencies or organizations involved. So we've got the Housing Authority, Habitat, Home Headquarters, and Homesite. We talked today about making sure that we loop Unity House in, Community Action Program, other, other agencies that provide housing. The other thing we were talking about and really trying to capture, and, and this is where it's important for elected officials to have this data, is making sure that we have a good handle on the, the real affordable housing need. Because we have other developers that are interested in our community as well and that will be, you know, talking to the council, talking to our other boards around site development. So Christine Bianco from DSS was at this meeting today. She, in the next few days, is going to be providing a lot of their data, both now and over the last few years, so that we can get a handle on what the real need is around, both the emergency housing piece as well as the need for permanent supportive housing, the kind of clients that need to be housed, the kind of supports they need around them, how big their units need to be, all of those kinds of things she's going to be giving us so that we can answer your questions and, and that you can be confident, that you can support, whether it's this project or another project, and that we're not overbuilding on the affordable side and ignoring market rate. We want to make sure the whole continuum from emergency to homeownership, that we are building it all appropriately and what our community needs.
Absolutely.
So we also talked today about doing a countywide housing needs assessment. You know, that's something that, you know, will take a little while and we're going to need some of these answers sooner than that. So, you know, hopefully this data from DSS will be helpful in kind of interpreting what our needs are right now.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
So I just want to make the comment that our, our goal should always be, this would be a good problem if in 2025, we didn't have the need anymore. So the goal of a nonprofit really should always be to be working on solving the problem that we're, we're trying to help anyway and so that we aren't, aren't relevant anymore. So it sounds like as, as long as we have a coordinated approach to bring people out of the situation that got them in the homeless shelter to begin with, or wherever they are, and take them forward so that the goal will be to live independently. And I think as long as we can look at that along the way and make sure that that's always front and center, I would be supportive of this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Treusen, thank you. Nice to see you again. As you mentioned, Ms. Haynes, as you mentioned, there, there have been several meetings on this issue in the last six months to a year. You know, there's a saying, if it, if it's not broke, don't fix it. If one thing has become clear from these meetings is the system of how we're doing this now is severely broken. We are literally paying, as, as county taxpayers, to house people in hotels. And Counselor Castro brought up a great point, the safety of what you're proposing and what potential problems there would be. And I think that's something that we need to consider, something that we certainly need to research. You know, maybe, maybe it would be appropriate for Chief Slaton to talk to his counterpart in Syracuse to see what kind of issues the Syracuse Police Department has at your facility Counselor Castro asked a great question, do we go to the Chapel Street location on Grand Ave? And the answer was yes. But I would also ask the question, do we go to hotels for problems with, with the homeless population that's being housed there? That, that is 100%. The answer is yes. And it, from the meetings I've been in, it poses some very unique problems. There is no security, there is no oversight. We've seen human trafficking, we've seen drug issues because there is no oversight. So city managers talked about this great problem we have at Falcon Park and Casey Park and all these people coming into Auburn. That's a great problem to have, but we also have places, need to have places for them to stay and that's in our hotels. If we're using our hotels for Department of Social Services functions, we are failing miserably. And we need to come up with a solution. Again, what Counselor Castro is asking are great questions because those are the same questions our constituents are going to ask, especially those constituents that live in residential neighborhoods near there. in residential neighborhoods near there. So, you know, I guess my question is, how do we go about, as this process moves along, involving the public, educating the public, and including them in this process? Because that's going to be vital, and I'm sure that you've had to do this with, with other projects.
Yep, absolutely.
So, so what does that process potentially look like?
I mean, in other areas, I mean, in the past year, unfortunately, we've had to do them via Zoom due to COVID, but I think things are maybe starting to open up now. So what we do is we kind of have like town hall meetings or, I don't want to really call them charades, but more of a community outreach meeting, kind of a similar presentation to what I gave tonight, I would give to, you know, local community members. And then more or less, less presentation, but more dialogue and question and answer, get their feedback, and kind of similar to how some of our earlier meetings went, where I do more listening than talking at that point, you know, what are, what are the needs? How can we help solve your issues and, and go from there?
Sure.
So yeah, we're happy to start, maybe, you know, once we get further along, I think we can probably start those maybe late spring, early summer.
You know, and this is really a multifaceted problem, right? I don't want to talk about people who are in these situations as they're just these numbers, right? So trying to be very careful of that because it is supportive housing, it's trying to fix the situation they're in and provide them with the tools, you know, to be successful in life and, but at the same time, there's, there's a dollar amount attached to this too. And then that's the number that keeps floating in these meetings that we're in, the millions of dollars that we are literally paying hotels to house people. And, you know, how could that money be better used to put these people into better situations, right? That we can help them on that path to, to success, maybe even homeownership at some point.
Right.
What is the overall price tag of this project? Do you, do you have that?
I don't have it yet because we still haven't identified properties, but I think, you know, with fifty-six shelter beds and maybe fifty or sixty housing units, it'll probably be in the twenty-five to thirty-five million dollar range, roughly.
And just to be clear for people who are listening, we, we say Chapel House, it's not the Franklin Street location, it's the Grand Ave location.
Grand Ave, correct.
And while that demolition and construction is going on, where, where would these clients that are currently there, where would they be staying?
That's something we need to identify. So whether it's an interim site for Chapel House to continue to house their sixteen.
Would it be appropriate or available if any of us wanted to tour the facility that you own and operate in Syracuse? Would that be something that would be available to us?
Yes, I think we, as partners, we want to give Salvation Army, I think, a forty-eight hour notice just to make them aware of people coming in, because they are a little sensitive security-wise because it is an emergency shelter for women only. So as long as we schedule it ahead of time, not a problem.
Okay. And the last question I have is for Ms. Haynes, is, so this area is currently zoned for exactly what they're proposing? It won't have to go in front of zoning or?
Right, but we, we looked at that early on. This is highway commercial zone, homeless shelters are allowed in that particular zoning district.
Thank you.
So these numbers right here are based on sixteen people?
Yes. It was over sixty calls to the Grand Ave location dating back to March twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
So we're comparing apples to apples. Could you, and I don't know how you do this, because you're going to respond to the Hilton, to the Holiday Inn, to the Days Inn, for other things, but could we get the numbers related to DSS clients of calls for service we've had to those hotels?
Don't know if we can pull it by name, by the clients that were there, because we don't have.
Well, that, we don't want names, right? But I guess the nature of the call. Would we know that they're visitors or if they're?
We would not.
Okay. Can we just get the calls for service from the police department?
To hotels.
To those hotels for the same time period?
For all the hotels in the city?
Yes. Well, any hotel that DSS currently houses clients in.
Yes, I will. I won't be able to do that right now.
No, 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 that's not.
You were pretty fast with the last one.
Chief, we're going to be here for an hour.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just have the feeling this, this process, this, this idea is going to be, take up a lot of counsel's time, but, but it is crucial to our community in, in all regards. So I'm not trying to be a wet blanket and say, no, just leave us alone, something has to be done. But how we go about it forever, we're going to be known as the counsel that adopted this plan or this idea. So we want to make sure we have everything that we feel is appropriate. So I'm sure you run across that before.
Yep.
All right, very good. Fair enough, counsel, that topic? Very good. Thank you. Proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-two strategic, strategic recovery and capital plan. Christina, welcome.
I have to say, it feels so good to be in front of you without a mask. December was a little rough, so this is much nicer. Thank you, Governor. And, all right, so we are here for our annual presentation. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Thank you for the opportunity, as always, to present to you the city's fiscal year twenty-two capital plan. For the public, my name is Christina Selvick. I am the Director of Capital Projects and Grants for the city. My office reports directly to the city manager. Since this time last year, we've had a lot of change in our community and the world. As of May of twenty twenty-one, at least in my world, the city of Auburn received ten point seven million in federal coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery funding under ARPA. The purpose of those funds is to support the response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. As part of the program implementation, governments are strongly encouraged to seek feedback from the public and provide publicly available information on how these funds are being allocated in our community. Therefore, for the next five years, the city is going to be combining our capital plan that we do annually with the ARPA strategic plan so that the projects and information are consolidated into one document and the two programs and the funding sources are closely related and available to the public for information. So hence, strategic recovery and capital plan. So for those that might not be familiar with capital planning, just a really quick overview, why do communities do capital planning? CIP serve as a great planning tool and are critical when we need to prioritize our water, sewer, transportation, other essential public services. Capital plans also play an important role in our community's comprehensive plan since these facilities and infrastructure are offered here for future generations. The annual CIP is expected by our city fiscal advisors, our auditors, and Moody's when we are doing our bond rating. The New York State Office of State Comptroller has issued several guidance documents related to the management of capital assets and funds. Most recently, U.S. Department of Treasury is responsible for the management of the ARPA funding, and they've issued the final rule document as of January of twenty twenty-two, and that provides the final guidance for eligible and ineligible uses of ARPA funds. This plan also serves as a great communication tool for our residents and our businesses regarding future capital projects and neighborhood investments. So the New York State Office of State Comptroller provides guidance regarding common funding sources for how local governments can finance our capital projects. The first one being, you know, ourselves. So, you know, the long-term, short-term, and installment, lease-purchase contracts. So serial bonds, which is what we're going to be bringing before you here in the next month, is our long-term capital financing. So these are long-term bonds that go out five or more years. The short-term financing, which can be year-to-year and up to five years, is our bond anticipation notes. And then for when we are purchasing large equipment, fire apparatus is a great example. That's when we might use the lease purchase option for project financing. Second funding source, which we've had a lot of discussion over the years, is grants. And this can be used to offset part of the cost for capital improvements. We work, the city works with several federal and New York State agencies across all city departments and all facets of our partner agencies at the federal and state level. Finally, the city does have the option of using budgeted operation funds to cover smaller capital investments. These might be emergency roof replacements or HVAC improvements that are needed that weren't, you know, anticipated as part of the plan. And then user fees related to those that have enterprise funds. This might be water, sewer, and solid waste. I know this is hard to read, but it is a good snapshot of where we are with our active funded projects. It is not all-inclusive, I couldn't cram anything more on there. You know, so it doesn't reflect all of the great work that our planning departments do with our CDBG program, which I know they recently presented before council, as well as our federal AFG grants, which are critical to our fire department. But really briefly, I do want to say that we do have roughly twelve projects in the design stage funded with grant, grant-funded dollars. Projects that are ending this year are in our police department, including actually say, OVC and IV, ICGR programs. Those are ending in September, and those are federally funded programs, as well as our urban forestry management plan. Projects that are expected to progress to construction include the water filtration plant and the biosalts project into this fall. So moving downward, as you can see, we definitely have a robust list of active construction projects. Some of these are in closeout stage. The manager, so nicely in January, gave a year-end kind of recap and talked about many of these projects and the impact they've had on the community. So those in closeout would be South Street and the fire station. And then others might still have a construction season ahead of them, including the State Street Plaza project and the parking garage improvement project. Finally, at the bottom is our current allocation of ARPA funding. So this list is based upon the category, categories provided to the city and how we had to report them in the most recent quarterly report. Any questions on current projects or budgets? So in speaking with the manager, we thought it would be a good idea to just go back and review what we've done over the last four years with projects. I know this doesn't look like it shows restraint, but it does. So when it comes to authorizing bond ordinances for the general fund, council has done a good job with, you know, reviewing the projects before them and having a restraint with issuing those ordinances. So the two years in particular, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty. So you've got to remember, each year, staff comes before you and we're requesting row program, you know, fleet vehicles and the general, you know, operating things that are needed to run the community. So, but we also have special projects. So in twenty eighteen, if you recall, it seems pre-COVID now, you say pre-kids, but pre-COVID, we had North Division Street Bridge and Falcon Park project that year. So that's why you see the three bond ordinances. But with these special projects also generally comes some kind of special revenue, right? So we have additional rental revenue from the college, we have federal highway funds, Marcheselli funds, bridge NY monies that come in. And so that's why you see really, you know, yes, there might have been a large bond ordinance authorization, but we also have a large amount of revenue to offset those costs. Twenty twenty in particular was a busy year. We did the fire station, State Street Bridge, and finally, South Street, which should have happened a long time before, but better late than never. So, so that's why you see, you know, four ounces for that year, and then also the revenue that comes in to support those projects. So while it seems like we're kind of going up and down, a lot of it just has to do with the timing of the grant funds, when the projects are ready to go out for construction bidding. But in general, the city's been pretty consistent with what they're allocating to general fund. Any questions on the bar graph? So this year's proposed projects. So for the public's benefit, the general fund is our main fund. It's responsible for our public safety, our public works, and generally, all things general government. So here's the overall list of the proposed projects and requests. As I mentioned in the background memo, we start this process with city departments back in December. There is actually a two-page form that departments are required to complete and return back to my office, and they tell me what their anticipated needs are for the coming year. As you can see, fleet vehicles are definitely in need this year from our DPW, as well as our code department. Personal protective gear for our fire department and annual report program is always at the top of engineering's list. Moving into solid waste, we have needs for more fleet vehicles, and I'll get into the scale house improvement project here in just a minute. Water and sewer, at least at this time, is limited to fleet vehicles. And then as a reminder, we do have or are anticipating the future ARPA allocation in May. So diving into each of the fund requests, annual row program, there was a request for more monies. They are hoping for a two-million-dollar program, you know, being limited to roughly two million annually and wanting to scale back to reflect, I think, what has been going on in the community over the last two years and understanding what families and the workforce has been through. This allocation of eight hundred thousand would level the row program funding with what was allocated last year. It does provide sufficient funds in order for engineering to submit for all of the CHIPS reimbursement from New York State. So fleet.
Ms. Selvick?
Yes.
Just to be clear, if we didn't allocate that eight hundred thousand dollars to match the CHIPS funding, we would not get the full complement of money from the state.
I believe that's the case. Does that sound right? Yes.
Thank you.
So DPW, every year, their greatest need is replacement of fleet vehicles. Right now, they have a need to replace trucks number seventy and seventy-one. They're both six-wheel dumps from twenty fourteen, each having roughly twenty to thirty thousand in maintenance costs this past year due to injector and DEF issues. In order to address snow and emergency storm issues, they need to have nine trucks on the road at this point. So this would, this is not increasing the fleet, this is purely replacement. They are asking for a one-ton pickup this year. That one ton would be dedicated to the parking garage in downtown. They have a hard time finding a plow truck that currently fits in the parking garage and to address icing and snow removal. They, they can do it, but they're pulling from resources from other dedicated areas in the city. So this vehicle would be really helpful to the bid, our downtown area, and also provide assistance with downtown events. And just in general, when a truck is out of service, it gives them some room in the fleet. In order to continue providing support for the nuisance abatement board and being visible in our community, the code department is really in need of upgrading their fleet. At this point, there is a need for two vehicles, car three oh one, which is a twenty-ten this point, there is a need for two vehicles. Car 301, which is a 20-ton right now, is 82,000 miles. And then Car 302 is a 2013 with 131,000 miles, and is expected to have major repairs this year. And at the moment, I don't believe there's enough hand-me-down vehicles that we try to move around throughout the city to cover the needs in the code department. So that's why you're seeing a request for two new vehicles this year. And finally, turnout gear for our fire department. This is generally a requirement every 10 years. I remember asking for this 10 years ago. So we're at the point that the turnout gear has exceeded its useful life. It is a requirement, I think, of NFPA policy in order to keep our firefighters protected and to have quality gear as they're responding to service calls. So that is general fund. Any questions on that? All right, solid wastes and refuse funds. The refuse collection is pretty straightforward this year. There's a request for one replacement Packer. These generally have a useful life of only four to five years because of the materials that they're hauling and the amount of mileage that is put on them. And we try to replace them every other year. So we are due this year for one. We had one that had a fire damage, and so that one is a little bit, you know, not quite as old as we would normally have to worry about. So we're only requesting one this year. And then the scale house at the landfill. So this building has been in service since 1992. It is in need of complete replacement. So, you know, they sent me lots of great pictures. Right now, there is, I believe, no running water because the roof is leaking. It's a complete replacement. So they're asking for $160,000 right now to remove the building. There's already utilities to it. They're not sure what the supply market looks like for these type of structures, so that's why they want to give themselves a little bit of room. And so there's a great need for that right now. Guest Terry.
Yes, Mayor, Ms. Selvick, and actually, maybe Mr. Diger. I had mentioned a while back about the, I guess, the showers or locker rooms. Would that be part of this or another?
I've had discussions with the folks down there. DPW was working on getting a plan together for that.
Okay, so they're...
And there's been some interesting discussions between myself and some other city staff and the folks that worked out there.
Okay.
Maybe more appropriate for another time for discussion.
Very good. Thank you. All right.
Can I?
I just wanted to follow up on my...
So do these prices reflect concerns about supplies and increasing prices? Have you built that into these?
Yeah, and inflation. So when I ask for the requests in December, that's why we try to move them forward as quickly as possible. So it's all based on pricing either in December or January. Granted, with how the market has been this past year, I can't predict, you know, how long things are going to take, what issues there's going to be along the way. But, you know, staff does a pretty good job with, you know, getting their pricing and getting quotes that hold, and particularly our fleet vehicles, as soon as, you know, we do the ordinance and authorize the funding, they're right out there securing their trucks. All right, sewer fund and water fund. So this year, so there is a request from the DMU for two new fleet vehicles this year. This really is to support the increase in service calls that these two departments have had, particularly tropical storm fry this past summer and record rainfall. The DMU and Tom Gayback's crews were proposing these fleet additions. Right now, they rely heavily on the private sector to come in and give them assistance with certain service calls, particularly if we have very deep sewer laterals or very long trenching for water mains needed. So they feel at this point that there would be beneficial use to actually owning these two vehicles within the city fleet. Yes?
So by purchasing, purchasing these two vehicles, sub and work out the other contractors would go down?
That is their hope. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Selvick?
Yes.
The follow-up on that question, could you provide us with what we spend annually on those services with third-party contractors?
Yes, I can do that. All right, and moving forward with ARPA funding. So the city is expecting our second tranche of ARPA funding in May of 2022. The Treasury's final ruling takes effect in April, and that gives us just a little more flexibility with the categorical expenses that we have to kind of stay within. So at the moment, they have placed a cap on the revenue replacement. So communities can elect to do a $10 million cap, all right, and that gives us much more flexibility in how we are able to allocate those funds locally, or we have to use the formulas provided, and communities can elect to go over that revenue replacement. Because the fact that the city has just a little over $20 million coming, the comptroller and I are suggesting that we just stay at the $10 million cap for that in our reporting requirements, and it would be a lot easier to move funding around as needed for that category. And the other ones, so public health and safety, not much has changed there related to the final ruling. The negative economic impacts, that is our investments in our neighborhoods again, as we've talked about housing sidewalks, you know, public improvements in those areas. Water and sewer infrastructure, they have limited that to the clean water and drinking water SRF eligible program items. So anything that EPA would generally fund under those two programs are also eligible under ARPA. And then general program administration, as this program moves forward for the next five years, and making sure communities continue to support their public sector workers. And we can come back and do a workshop just on ARPA discussion, you know, at a later date. I would feel better with the money in the bank. So, you know, when it finally does get here in May, that would be good timing to talk about what some plans are. Moving forward, so capital planning. So we're doing capital plan overall and row program presentation tonight, and then looking forward to any comments or suggestions that the public and council have related to those proposed funding items. And then at this point, we will start the bond ordinance and seeker process for March. That way, row program's able to get out for bidding hopefully by the end of March, first week of April, is what they're shooting for.
Christine, has that missed print on there? We're meeting on St. Patrick's Day?
I think you are meeting on St. Patty's Day. Yes, Murphy's to follow.
All right.
And I'm happy to answer any questions. All right. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
You're welcome.
Road program with Mr. Lupin, City Engineer, Mr. Lupin, welcome.
I should say, good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, road program. What we're doing is basically, made a couple maps here. What we do is we drive every street in the city every year. I should put a congratulations here to Scott McIntyre, who was not able to show up tonight. He is the one that put most of this presentation together. Scott is also the one that goes out and drives the streets. He's assisted with like O'Neal and Ken Tanner and George Wathie, and they drive every street in the city, put down the condition, and then we go from there. Basically, we're looking at the trends. Again, we're trying to keep the good roads in good condition, and by doing that, it's the, you just picked the right method. Like, we put the crack ceiling in there, that keeps the water from getting into the cracks and causing potholes and all the rest. We do a lot of micro-surfacing now, where we, it's like two layers of asphalt embolition with a little bit of stone, fine aggregates in there, and it gives a new writing surface, but it also keeps the water out of getting into the pavement. And then, some of the streets, they're a little bit farther gone, and that's where we start doing the, we can go sometimes with a straight overlay, but most of the time, it's a mill and fill. Ninety percent of all the work we do is usually mill and fill of those type. And then the reconstruction, just like we did on South Street, sometimes the streets are so bad that you just can't save them, and you've got to go out and full dug and dig out. But that's like 10 times more expensive than to do a mill and fill, and the mill and fill is probably 10 times more expensive than a crack seal. So this is an example of a crack seal going on right now. This is the micro-surfacing. It's, like I say, it's two applications. It's kind of nifty. It goes down brown, and then when the asphalt breaks, it turns black, and then we can continue. The stuff dries, usually in about three hours. And then, we usually try to come back the next day and put the second treatment down, weather-dependent. Here's an asphalt repaving where we actually have the big asphalt paving machines out there with the rollers behind it, big trucks, and away we go. And this was a nifty little pothole that we found it looked like the dollar sign, what we got to spend to fix them. Year-to-year comparison, we've gotten a little bit more money each year from council the last few years. We've been able to keep more of the good streets in good condition, and so that we're actually gaining a little bit on the overall condition of the city streets, although we put down what we feel might be $10.7 billion to go after all those bad streets. But I think that's before the price has just went up here, which seem to be going up, you know, weekly. Basically, our funding sources, what we do is, we were lucky, we got a lot of money from the consolidated highway improvement funds, the CHIPS funds. They have a pave New York program. It's a five-year program. I think this is the fifth year. Hopefully, it'll get renewed. There's an extreme winter recovery, and they now have a new one, pave our pothole program. But the overall funding in 2021 was $1 million one, and we're kind of projecting the same amount for this year. Of course, the state budget doesn't have to be, it ends March 31st, supposed to be in line April 1st, so we'll find out exactly what we get. The way we do our funding, we get the $800,000, hopefully, that you'll support as part of the capital improvement. We use because we're replacing manholes, sewer manholes and catch basins, and we're doing the improvements in access to the roads for the sewer and water. We get a little contribution from those two funds. And then the big thing is we also get the CHIPS money, but we're very, it all has to be used for highway. This year, we're continuing our micro-surfacing program. Now, these are only estimates. The big first thing is down on the bottom, $1.6 million. That's what we're planning on putting out on the road program. Now, if the bids come in higher, then we'll have to tighten up a little bit on the other areas. If it comes in a little bit less, then we can look to see if we want to do a little bit more on the micro-surference, crack sealing, or some of the miscellaneous projects, or do we want to add a couple of streets and go back with a change order. Now, what we've been doing lately is a quadrant base. We've been, the gas electric loves us, the utilities, and we tell them what we're going to be doing and what section of the city, then they hurry up and evaluate their utilities in that section, try to get there before us. We've been doing the, we did the southeast. This year, we did the southwest. Now, this current year, we're going to go in the northeast quadrant. We're going to concentrate most of our, the mill and fill type operations will be in the northeast quadrant. And then next year, we'll do the northwest, and then we'll go back to the southeast and the southwest. Now, if you can, if you've got enough money, you can do all the bad streets in the quadrant, that's great. If you end up short a little bit, well, that's another five years before you actually get back there. So we really try to do it. Now, here is a map showing what we did last year, all the little blue ones. And then we were able to use a little touring route money over there on Lansing Street and Brine, so that's why you see those two up there. Now, what isn't in here is the South Street reconstruction project, because that was different funding. But now, in the micro-surfacing, you notice that we tried to do a lot of the streets last year for the southeast quadrant, I mean, Southwest quadrant that we did this year, so that we concentrated on the other three sides. We really looked heavily in the northeast quadrant, because that's the quadrant we're going in this year. So we try to get, stay ahead, get those streets out of the way. And now, here's the, all the streets that we did with crack sealing, trying to keep the good streets in good condition, right? So, and then here's a composite of every street we worked on last year, other than, say, that South Street reconstruction, which was a different project. So you can see that, you know, we are in every quadrant of the city, and we're, you know, we do quite a few operations throughout the city. Now, this is your, this year's proposed program. These are all the streets. See, a lot of them, the last time we were there, were usually in the late 90s. You know, you try to get back every 10 or 12 years, while we were 20, 25 years on some of these streets. And Rochester Street, we haven't been there since 1981. So, you know, that's 41 years ago. So that's a long time. Is, again, we have a major list of streets, and then we put some alternates. If it will be good prices, then we hope to get into the alternate list. With the road program money, we also do, we go on city-owned properties. We look around the railroad tracks. So we've got some large patches here and there. Also, this year, we've got a, what do you call it? Let me get that in the next slide. We also, as part of the touring route money, we're working on the Genesee Street East Hill, going from the bridge up to North Fulton, and we're also looking at John Street. Now, we've got to do some sewer improvements on John Street, some storm work, and also we're doing some improvements on, for the manholes on East Genesee Street Hill, and doing some storm sewer work, which has got to be done first, and then we'll come right in and mill and fill it. We're all planning on doing that in the second half of this year. Because of, we had a little bit of money left over because we had good pricing from the 2021, we knew we were probably going to get into the alternate list. We wanted to do Tabor Drive, but because that was the detour for the South Street reconstruction project, we did not do that, because that, but now that that's done, we are going to do that Tabor Drive, and then we'll go over to Lafayette Place. I don't know if anybody's ever been to Lafayette Place, but the gas electric went down there, and they put all kinds of patches and everything. And we have enough money left over on the 2021 program that we'll do these two streets. And that's, and then we'll look at, like I say, every year. Now, in these, the picture on the left, if you look up, there's a, like, it looks like on the, between the green traffic signal and the post, halfway up, looks like a little candy cane. Now, these are video detections, so we can now use a video type of thing. MyoVision does it. It controls the intersection, instead of using traffic loops. Now, we can use this. It's roughly about $15,000 in intersection. When we're taking out the loops, the loops usually are $4,000 or $5,000 in each direction. So if we had, in a four-lane thing, you might have $16,000 to $20,000 worth of loops. If we mill and fill and take the loops out, it's going to cost us $20,000. We can put a brand-new We can put a brand-new traffic aerial video on here that'll control the intersection. Now, we've got one right now out there on, on the Loop Road at East Genesee, and if anybody's been on East Genesee trying to get the wagmans, you'll notice, you know, wait as long, it's working a lot better there. And what do you call it, Northeast Signals is, put that one up for free as a demonstration project. Now, what we plan to do is on a lot of the streets, when we get into where we're milling and filling, and we get into a traffic signalized intersection, we'll probably put one, another, one of these devices up at that intersection, so we can approve the traffic control. These use, all use an artificial intelligence, and they monitor not only the cars, but the bicycles and the people walking, and they can adjust the, the timing of the signals based on the usage. And it's all, you know, video, and it, you know, so then you don't have to worry about the loops and them breaking down and not working again. So it's...
Mr. Lupien?
Yes?
If you yell really loud, Alexa, please turn green, will that affect the...
Wouldn't that be great? Unfortunately, for the people that are in the other direction, say, I wonder what they're saying.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Lupien. On, on the alternate list for 2022?
Okay.
You have Standard Ave from North Street to Vista?
I got to get back.
My, my only question is, are we going to be doing any work on that intersection onto North Street from Standard Ave to widen that?
On North Street itself? No, that's, you mean the state highway?
Well, if we're going to do Standard from...
Oh, okay.
From North Street to Vista?
Standard Ave, we're planning on widening the street about eight feet on the north side.
Okay.
Okay, and we'd stay within the current right-of-way. We also would, we'd be doing the radius, and you'd see a major improvement on the southeast corner, right there, where all the cars...
Yes.
Cut over the curb, and they've knocked out the catch basin hoods and the catch basins and everything.
Yeah.
And it's really tough, if you've got a big vehicle there with somebody on the side, to hurry up and try to take a right and not try to wipe out somebody waiting for the light. Yeah, we'll definitely, that's one of those things we like to work on. Again, that's, I think it's a, that's, wasn't that an alternate?
Yeah, it's on the alternate.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We've got to acquire a little right-of-way from that, that corner property to do that. And so far, the gas electric was moving the pole line over there, and the state's been looking at, doing some signal work there, so basically, we just haven't been able to, we'll have to wait till they get out of the way, and then we'd probably come right in after that. Yeah, that's definitely one of the streets I'd love to do, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
The crack sealing, is that by the foot, by the hour, by the product? What is that?
You pay by the gallon, and then you also, if they need additional flaggers, you pay for the flaggers, right? But it's by the gallon, and we, and we'll be going already, we've got some money tied up already to go right out this spring. They will, you know, definitely April, May is when they'll start their operation. City of Auburn will be one of their first customers. We want to do the cracks while they're still open a little bit, so the time they really do the crack sealing is spring and fall. You don't want to do them right at that center in the hottest days, because then all the cracks are tight and you don't put much material down into them. Spring and fall is the best, so we'll do crack sealing. Some of the streets, we want to micro-surface, we want to crack seal first, so we'll try to get the crack seal operation out first, and then come in with our first round of micro-surfacing. At the same time, before we do the micro-surfacing, we use the county bid prices, and we go out and try to patch those streets. So we get the patches done, we get the crack sealing done, and then we micro-surface it, and then we'll come back and adjust the structures.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Lupien, did you say that Standard Ave, they are trying to widen it?
No, we will widen it eight feet on the, it's a very narrow street, it's like 24 feet. It's really tough for buses to come up and down and all the rest. What we want to do is widen the road eight feet on the north side.
Right.
So now the, and then we'll leave a wide dead area in between them, so then the people will be able to swing in, and they will still be away from the two lanes, right?
Most of the utility poles have been replaced.
Right, they've been moving them over, and now they've got Verizon's got to move all their wires and all the rest, which takes time, you know? So, it might not get together until next year, really. I mean, I said, the project might not come together until next year, really, but we're definitely hopeful.
And the clerk said that the widening is actually going to be in the area of the intersection of North Street? Am I correct there?
North Street width will stay exactly the same. All we're going to do is redo the radiuses, and then we'll make Standard Ave wider, right? But Standard, North Street, we're not changing the width.
No, no, but the intersection of North and Standard.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lupien. Mr. Deiker, bar graph reports.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just going to go back to the road program for just a second, if you don't mind. Related to that Standard Ave intersection, that's a discussion we've been having for several years with engineering in New York State. It's my understanding that, I believe it's Kyle Croft Development that owns the property across the street, across North Street from Standard Ave, has also been working with New York State DOT for potential modifications to that intersection. So we kind of anticipate those things happening along the same timeframe. The other thing I want to mention is, at least in the time I've been in my position, I remember the first couple of springs, and there were, like, it seemed like endless phone calls about potholes and claims and things like that, but I can, I can say that in the last two or three years, the program has caught up enough that the frequency or the volume of phone calls and complaints about potholes, I may have just doomed myself, but the frequency of those calls has reduced significantly over the last few years. So through a combined effort of that, and through the summertime, Public Works Department partners with Water and Sewer Department to go through, and they repair catch basins, our own crews do the catch basin and manhole reconstruction, and some minor paving around those things, it seems to have had a significant benefit to things, as well as engineering on most of the major road projects, and most of the major roads is converted to self-adjusting manholes, which are really cutting down on the pothole issues on, on some of these streets. So they rise and fall with the asphalt during the winter months, rather than having the stuff cracked and create potholes in spring. Related to the bar graph reports, again, we're just a little bit more than halfway through the current budget year. Again, like last month, you'll see some spikes, mostly those are related to the pension payments, and that typically happens twice a year. That happened last month, and this month, you'll see that start to moderate, and that will happen throughout the rest of the budget year. The other place where there's a significant spike is in code enforcement, and that is due to some of the demolition that we've just recently wrapped up. Other than that, if you've got any particular questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Counselor? You see, Counselor Genatino, no, he's coming up with a question, or is he looking for something?
No, I'm good. I've asked enough questions today.
Counselor, it's your turn. Any other business from yourselves?
I agree, City Manager, about the potholes and everything else, but it was good to see the city crews out the last few weeks with their pothole machine filling potholes. That means a lot, and it probably keeps the calls out of your office also.
Yeah, they've been doing good, and that machine seems to work fairly well to take care of that. The problem we have this time of year is crews go out, they do their best to attempt to fill potholes in the wintertime, because of such a change in the weather conditions, like we just experienced last week, going from 60 back down to the 20s or teens, doesn't work well, and trying to fill a pothole that's already full of water is almost a... Been working better.
Anyone else? Second public to be heard? Is there anyone desiring to be heard this evening? We have a request for executive session.
Mayor, we have one quick update following our attorney-client privilege related to the tax case.
Entertain a motion for executive session. Second, my Counselor Genatino. Counselor, is anything else you'd like to add to that? Clerk, if you call the law for executive session, please.
Executive session, 6:41 PM. Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye. We're resessing for executive session.